Yeah, I think we do.
Right. It is six thirty if everybody's standing and joining in the pledge. A pledge of honor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Walton, if you call the roll.
Mayor Parnie?
Here.
Mr. Terrence?
Here.
Mr. Beale? Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rucker?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Here.
Is there an approval for tonight's meeting agenda for August eighth?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
And is there approval for the council meeting minutes from July twenty fifth?
Motion approved at council meeting minutes from July twenty fifth.
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
You're trying to be our theory here. Okay, I may repeat.
Yes.
Just for, yes.
I know, I say in my mind, I was trying to think if it's Mr. Rucker that could do that and everything. But I do not have a proclamation this evening, but we have a couple of visitors. But first, I would like to welcome State Representative Brian Stewart to the podium.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate you stopping by. I just want to stop by and introduce myself. I've been, I'm unposed on the ballot for the first time in my life, and I highly recommend it. Never had the pleasure before, but now that we're sort of through that process, I'm going to get ahead and start on just getting ready to do this. I've been a, finished on my first term in the General Assembly. I was county commissioner in Pickaway County three years before that. Before that, I was on village council in what I'm now going to call Plain City of Pickaway County, actually over Ohio, which is very, very similar. We got here early and kind of drove around, remind me of doing my driving tours when I was member of council myself. And I brought my kids to help sample one of your local pizzas when we're done here. That was my promise. So they're going to be good here for two or three minutes, and we're going to enjoy that. But just wanted to let you know a little bit about me. I came from local government. And that's a little different than my predecessor and a little different maybe than, you know, Bill Dean is my neighbor. He's a good man. But doesn't have quite the same experience locally that I think has been a valuable perspective for us to have. I vote on the kind of resolutions you're dealing with, take them in the slings and arrows and, you know, maybe occasionally if we get a couple of things done, give us kudos, but it's important. We just got done with the capital budget at the state level. I was able to get capital budget funding for all six of my counties in my current district. My view of this job is, I'm a squeaky wheel and columnist for things that you guys want to accomplish here locally. I'm very easy to get ahold of. I introduced my legislative aide, JT Iseldike. Not quite a local, but very close. Spent a lot of time in Madison Counties from Hilliard area. And has been doing a great job making sure we know where the district is, given we had a bit of a complicated line growing process over the last nine months. And thankfully, that is behind us. When I was county commissioner, we had a really successful eight-year run, built a brand-new fifteen million dollar fairgrounds from scratch. Brought twenty-eight hundred new jobs to Pickaway County in that amount of time. Took our own rate from nine and a half percent to three and a half percent, quadruple green day fund, never raised taxes, about a fudge every year. And that was a record we're proud of, and now we're in the General Assembly. I had ten bills or resolutions passed out of house in my first eighteen, eighteen minutes of the job. That is more than most members who've been there for seven or eight years. We came in with a list of things we wanted to do, attorney, private practice, having the experience that you do. Came in knowing what we wanted to do, were well with others, get along, and try to remember Schoolhouse Rock and how we pass bills. Get these things through. So worked a lot on broadband internet expansion, farm leasing, building land to clear the courts, pass the budget, cut everybody's taxes, better cover schools, everything in between. So again, just wanted to put a face to the name. I want to work with you in months and certainly years ahead. And I wanted you to have my contact info so that we can start to talk about how we can ground funding in January first for whatever projects that you all have in queue. Other than that, I don't want to augur meaning, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, we greatly appreciate you coming this evening, especially I know the state capital budget is very near and dear to us as we have some big level projects that we'd like to be, have our sights on in the next couple of years. And if anybody else has anything else, just really appreciate the representation. That's something that we, we would like to see more of.
Nice to meet you all. We're going to get pizzas.
Well, enjoy the pizza. You have several options, so you'll have to let us know which ones you choose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list of visitors, Mr. Greg Waiton, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Hello. As you said, Mr. Greg Waiton, I live on one eighty Land River Lane. And Haley asked me to come speak with you, which is about the incident we had with the water lines being cut, our irrigation system. The second time it happened, the first one was Spectrum. They caught it, repaired it. Fortunately, the second time was Frontier. And it's an area where they had some difficulty because then I sliced my water line, but my neighbor's power was cut to his house. And I didn't discover that initial until I saw grass drying up and went to look at it and could see the whole grassy water was shooting out. So not sure who to call or who to talk to, like Paul Haley, and left a message with her. And she had, I believe it was Ms. Bob from Frontier come out and, oh, I'm sorry, he had a crew come out. And he joined about ten minutes after they got there, made sure everything was taken care of, they repaired the line. They also repaired the grass situation where they had made quite a mess in a sense where they were trying to reroute my neighbors' power line. Fixed that up, smoothed it out, did a good job, and we're pleased with it. But thank you to her, and we're done.
Thank you so much for.
Appreciate it.
Good news for today, right?
Yes.
That's so refreshing.
What's wrong with this picture? Where did the other shoe drop?
I kept waiting for, I kept waiting for the butt.
The butt, the other shoe.
No, but it's just.
Well, especially having two different networks come through in a short amount of time. We appreciate the understanding and Ms. Lupton's been great to make sure that each resident that has had an issue to get it resolved hopefully quickly. So thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Stephanie Seifer.
So I wanted to come tonight to talk about the noise ordinance. I've been following the progress, kind of been looking stuff up, reading the minutes from last year. And I see that it kind of stalled out in October of last year and know that we kind of transitioned to several new council members. I spoke with the mayor in May about some issues that we still experienced at my house. I live at one twenty-three East First Avenue. And she said at the time that our best option was to reach out to the police for any complaints, which we've been doing throughout the summer. We end up calling, and the police are exceptional. They come, Johnny was Bud, actually, and spend all the time in the world to talk to you and listen to what you have to say. And they always are able to curb the noise, so I, I have actually given them as many kudos and congratulations as I possibly can. But unfortunately, we have to keep calling, and it's just, it's a frustrating process that I just, maybe as we kept talking, and actually the police even, several of the officers encouraged us to come and speak to you. And so first, you know, that's not what I wanted to do. And I even said that to what I talked to the mayor. I said, no, that's not what I want to do, but here I am. And I want to see if we can, you know, talk about a better solution, something that's more succinct, you know, sustaining as opposed to this every weekend thing. I'm doing a lot of research, not a big research gal, but I have done some research. And I wanted to find some, what we have already in place. And so I've, I've read through the comprehensive plan and through the Uptown Historic zoning stuff that what you have listed for now. And maybe what I wanted to see is what you're envisioning for the future of Uptown, the historic district. And one of the things that jumped out to me was from a statement that was from the two thousand sixteen survey where it said that the number one thing that folks said they liked most about Plain City was that it was a small town, which I would concur, I'm sure I wrote something like that. But in particular, I liked this quote that it said the residents described the village as a quaint, small town and want to maintain that feeling in the future. And I guess I wanted to hone in on that word feeling. And I have seen that you guys are doing a lot of efforts with regard to new zoning laws and upgrading the zoning that would better quantify our look. And but what I guess I'm, I'm looking for is something that helps quantify that feel. And so I think what I, I actually ended up attending the branding initiative, and I actually really appreciated that. That kind of also kind of jumpstarted me even into do this, because I did actually think that that does a better job at quantifying feel. What is the identity, the heart of Plain City? And so I, I guess what I, I actually do think that we really need to define ourselves clearly so that when businesses come, which we all want them to come, that they don't define us, that they actually would conform to us as, as opposed to changing us. And so maybe I look at the noise ordinance as a really great quantifier of the feel of Plain City, the atmosphere, the culture. And then I think it goes to the heart of what it means to be a good neighbor to one another and respecting each other. And so I guess I look to having a solid piece of legislation that residential neighborhoods, as well as prospective, you know, business people, will help us to protect our historic downtown and give definition to our law enforcement. That was maybe the other thing I could hear is that the officer said that our law is subjective and can be vague. And so it was difficult to truly define. So what I thought as residents, they need to trust that no matter what neighborhood you live in, that incoming businesses aren't going to hinder your quality of life. And that businesses need to have clear directions. They know where to probably place their business and align themselves within our community. And then police need to have clear laws and guidelines as they're the people tasked with upholding the laws and seeing the community face-to-face on a regular basis. So I've been searching for a robust noise, noise ordinance, and I did find two examples. And I will tell you that it was hard to find because anyways, that was an exhaustive search. But I found this one in a town in Ohio called Union, Ohio. They're similar to us. They're about twice our size. They have sixty-seven hundred residents. And they were looking to upgrade their noise ordinance because they had a major distribution warehouse that was getting ready to come into their community. And they said that their whole reason was that although jobs can bring, although growth can bring jobs, it can also bring noise. And so their plan was to develop an objective enforceable code to protect its residents and provide guidance to the business community. And so their ordinance had like this whole thing, which I'm sure the lawyer in here will say, like they had all these definitions of what ambient sound is and all these things that I'm like, uh huh, uh huh, uh huh. But I guess those are important things. But then also they talked about having a formula to determine proper sound, which includes ambient sound distance as well as decibels. And that they had this clause in there that I actually really honed in on that talked about sound reproduction devices. And that if you had something like that, that the, your maximum allowable decibel level was reduced by a certain amount. I thought that was very interesting. And one of the other things in theirs that I thought was interesting was it spoke about that loudspeakers and any other sound equipment that needs to face into the geometric center of the property in which it's on so as to capture the sound within that business area as opposed to projecting it out into a residential neighborhood. The other example I have was from a town, unfortunately not in Ohio, it's in this town called Norwalk in Connecticut. But I actually thought it was pertinent to us because the whole reason they were coming up with the ordinance, which they already had one, was to regulate the sound from nightlife activities. And so I thought that was pertinent to us. And theirs was very similar to the previous one that I just mentioned as far as the levels and all that and the definition of how to get to that sound. But the thing I guess I liked about theirs was that they specifically talked about businesses that were serving alcohol, food, having life music and the latter. So I actually brought a copy of each of the ordinances tonight to hand to each of you, just to say, I really would love it if you would not just review them, but I do think that we need to adopt something, something that our noise ordinance is a paragraph. It just isn't enough to give protection to each of us as residents or the business. I can almost think of them too to say, they need understanding. And I did feel for the police officers. Every single one of them said they had no problem coming, but it just seems like such a petty reason, a waste. I felt like I'm wasting their time, and they have more important things to do, in my, in my opinion. And I felt like it's, it's your job as the people writing the, you know, things and signing. That's what we elected you for. And I guess I'm pushing it back to you to say, I need you to take it up again and not let it fall to the side. So maybe I'll ask, you know, I know I, you didn't know why I was telling you, or maybe you did, but what do you, where do you think that you are with this? And are you open to, to looking at it again?
I'm going to let council answer that question for.
I can only speak for myself. I can't speak for everyone. And normally, to be honest with you, we don't always take questions. This isn't a normal process. Right now, there is nothing on the schedule to evaluate the noise ordinance. That can always change as we talk about topics and as things change. But to be honest with you, right this second, there's nothing currently being evaluated at this exact moment.
And do you feel bad that it just dropped even though there were so many people that came and asked for change to be had? And it was supposed to go on a work session actually in October, and then that, that one was canceled. It was never actually rescheduled in the year twenty twenty-one, and then in twenty twenty-two, it never came up again. And I believe Mr. Lafayette did gather information, but there was never any remarks as to what came of that.
My, my feeling, my feelings do not really matter in this. However, what I would say is the council at the time, we held a open house. We took in the impact of businesses, of people, and I believe it came to a resolution. And the council at the time had read a memo from the legal standpoint. And to be honest with you, I actually believe it came to a resolution, is my actual view.
I didn't know if the open meeting, I just, I never.
We had a whole, we had a whole thing.
And that they, we, council was providing and certainly I think the discussions were, particularly with what you're talking about, that there's really, there's only two real things to look at here as far as trying to, you're either going to use an objective standard where it's, you know, something that would be found to be annoying or disturbing to a reasonable person, a reasonable person standard, or you go with a dedicated decibel meter readings. And matter of fact, our officers, you know, conducted, and I've shared with council, council's considered all the decibel meter readings and the various literature, documents, other communities like Hilliard that has decibel meter limitations. And also, and so considered all of that data. And matter of fact, the officers went out, we actually had the officers go out on multiple occasions over the weekends last summer. I think towards the end of last summer particularly, I think it was like Reaganomics and some of the bands were a little bit louder, rock and roll band, to take decibel meter readings in various areas around there. And I think in looking at those compared to the Hilliard statute.
Why are we using Hilliard? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
No, no, not just Hilliard, that was the sample.
Hilliard is five times the size of Plain City. I don't, I don't understand that.
I think when we looked at Hilliards, it had the Fairground District and to encompass like Pastime Park that is used for scene threshers and just trying to get a mass, something that kind of takes into all of our different events. I think that's why Hilliard was kind of looked at because.
Seems strange to me to use.
No, it wasn't just Hilliard. No, it wasn't just Hilliard. We gave, I mean, I said, I threw that out there as an example. There's one around here that has decibel meter readings.
We did some.
We use multiple other jurisdictions that we look to the decibel meter readings as well as those from various professionals that deal with auditory noise levels and things of that nature. And I think, I'd have to dig back through it, but I think, you know, you get to kind of a threshold of ninety decibels for any period of time.
I didn't find, neither of my examples are ninety decibels. Sixty-five decibels is what theirs are as a reputation. And it's actually not just the decibel. There's a science and a formula and equation, not just holding a meter reader and saying, what does this say? There are several factors that need to be considered when even doing it. There is a science to it.
And our officers went out and did that, and I think for the most part, all the decibel readers were, readings were coming back, even within fifty feet to a hundred feet of the stage were coming back at the low seventies. So any distance from there would have been, they actually did it in the neighborhoods, and I think they're coming back in forties and fifties. And that was when they had Reaganomics playing and, you know, and a couple of other bands. So we did gather that information.
I guess what the point that I'm trying to make is, is what are we saying is acceptable? Because to me, in a neighborhood, to have it in the low seventies, I guess to me, that's unacceptable.
Well, that was within the actual confines of the facility.
Unacceptable. But that's, that's what I'm trying to say. Are you saying that that's what is acceptable? None of you live anywhere near this, this area that I live. And so I'm asking you, I am telling you that the quality of life at my house every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evening has gone down in the summer. And I'm asking if you would consider the quality of life of the people who live in what you are describing in your zoning as the traditional residential neighborhood. And, and so I recognize that maybe Hilliard, that that's what they determined was acceptable with the ninety decibels. I think that's ridiculous.
No, and that's, again, I, I'll say it again, we didn't use Hilliard as the example. We used a number of different jurisdictions. There were probably two or three other ones that I just threw out there as examples. But we also relied heavily, we had documentation circulated on the literature from actual professionals in this area talking about the noise levels and where you get into, you know, when you're over ninety, then for, you know, for lengthy exposure, over ninety decibels for twenty-four hours could cause damage. If you get over a hundred decibels, how long? And then, you know, the, the decibels readings under that, again, I don't have it all in front of me. But basically what was coming back is if you were a block away from when they were having a concert on, it was down in the fifties and forties and even lower than that when you get further out. So it was only seventy decibels if you were actually there watching the band and you were there to be a patron to listen to the band. It was only in the seventies.
Ms. Seifer, I think there's some disagreement probably on what the ordinance actually says here. And my recollection of this whole thing is that the people who were, who were experiencing the most noise, which would be the distance you are from the noise, from the uptown area, had the expectation that this was going to get better. If it hasn't gotten better, then we should, council, I think, and it's not up to me, would be well advised to take up the issue again because you might just be the tip of the iceberg here with the discomfort with the, with the, with the situation that way, the way it was. There were actually some residents willing to take, to go the next step in getting their problem resolved. And, and when they talked to me, I advised them to wait and see what the new ordinances were going to be. And if their situation did get, get better, then present it to council again and let them work on it. Because in my opinion, which is slightly different from this lister, that the noise that's emanating on occasion, and I appreciate there's fewer maybe complaints than there were last year. I've seen comments that it's gotten better. But people are still hearing it, and they have to complain to get it turned down. That should not be. And I agree with you that, that there should be a policy here that ensures that after so many complaints, you know, it, it stopped, you know, permanently, if that's possible. I don't know if it's possible. But I think you've given an excellent presentation of the whole, of the whole thing. So thank you for coming here with this. And I think, I don't think council's here to debate with you over the pros and cons of this. So I'm going to suggest that we move on to other business now.
If you'd like to. If you'd like to begin.
Just to be clear, I wasn't expressing an opinion when we were there. I wasn't expressing what we did and what was considered. It's up to council to make a decision what they want to do. So I don't think, I don't think we were disagreeing.
Okay.
I think too what she's trying to say is I've measured fifty-five in our yard.
Can you leave a copy? I'll leave it as a mailbox.
It was still heard through our windows.
Do you want to leave a copy?
As, as, as an example to even say as a, as a resident, some of the annoyance of it, fifty-five still comes through the windows.
There's a number of bay or two.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
The short, yeah, the, just the terrible.
Oh, City of Union.
Is Ohio, yeah. And then the bigger.
But thank you for coming this evening.
Where is Norwalk?
It's in Connecticut.
Connecticut.
We do not have any other visitors this evening, and so I'll move into reports. On the other side of it, I wanted to thank Mr. Dawson for the Rock the Clock efforts. He asked if I would help to announce the band or the, the main act there on the, thank you, the July thirtieth. And it was a great community outing. There were several people that came to the event. So just wanted to send, extend that thanks to his family for helping to put that on for the town because the village doesn't do anything else besides, well, helping to shut down the streets. So thanks to the police officers and public works for all their hours that they put in on that event. Also wanted to extend thanks to the Hatcher family. As everyone knows, that yesterday was the last day for a little ease until they can find new owners. So we just want to appreciate the year, the, the five years that they have owned that business and turned it into quite the attraction to Plain City. A lot of people came to town to check out the business and support other businesses while they're here. So thanks to them. Tomorrow, I am on a Zoom meeting with the Union County Safe and Safety Coalition to talk about Safety Town and what went well and what can do for next year. And that's basically, and also school starts next Wednesday. So just to be aware of the extra traffic that will be around the elementary school, watching out for the children walking to school and the buses, and just want to wish them a great and safe school year. So with that, Ms. Sonnet, Finance Director?
I have nothing for the Finance Director, but I reached out to Haley this morning, and she gave me a couple of items to discuss during her work. No baby yet. No baby.
I spoke to her this afternoon too.
So no baby. So she asked me to say that everything went well with Rock the Clock on July thirtieth. The engineering for the Uptown Streetscape expanded scopes, is in some progress, hoping to get it back soon. Once it is, the plan and schedule will be communicated to business owners. Staff has participated in a meeting with the consultant tomorrow about the branding progress. The next step will be to bring the final concepts to council. Staff is ready for the final discussions regarding the zoning code updates on Wednesday for the work session. That's all.
Uh, Ms. Sonnet, so the big, bigger, biggest of the streetscape, will that come to us at some point? When will that, before it goes to the business or?
Yes.
Okay.
She, I think she just wanted to make sure that the businesses will be.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I think, because I think we're, that's the, are we going to do just the curve? We're going to do the curve all the way down? Are we going to do all the way down this?
Where does that scope in?
Big, bigger, bigger scope. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sonnet. Making sure I don't forget anybody. Chief McKee is not here. Council President, Mr. Terry.
Yeah, so on Wednesday, we have the zoning code rewrite review work session. So that's the only topic on Wednesday. And last Friday, or maybe it was two Fridays ago, I met with Mr. Reed and Ms. Granger, and we went over the, kind of the.
And we went over the, kind of the roundtable ideas for the Parks and Rec conversation in September. She already has a good kind of idea of what she wants to talk about, so I think it's going to be a really healthy discussion. We went ahead and invited Parks and Rec to that discussion, similar to like how we did the planning and zoning during the zoning code rewrite. So they, they know this stuff better than we do. So I figured we'd invite them and let them kind of, you know, not have to be called on to talk, because if they have opinions. And that should be September's work session, and that's going to be the main topic there. That's everything I have.
And looking forward, we won't have to, like, it'll be the first Wednesday.
Right now, we have not tried to reschedule it.
To seven, just making sure.
Yeah, to seven. Yeah, should be a good conversation.
Okay, that's exciting. Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Lafayette?
At this point, just reviewing a few documents for, I guess, Ms. Brill and Ms. Lupton. With regard to handling on the Darby and some other issues that we're dealing with, so kind of standard fare at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Lafayette. Marketing and Communications, Mr. Sens?
No updates.
And BCAA, Ms. Brill, is there a meeting?
There is no meeting.
And again, for planning and zoning, we are meeting on Wednesday, August twenty-fourth for our meeting. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Reed?
Thank you. Yeah, as Mr. Terry said, we had a very productive meeting. I thought it lasted much longer than, than, you know, you get into a meeting that's really going well and, and it seems to last longer than it should, than you planned for or should. But it did, and thankfully, it happened before Ms. Granger has her situation that she's dealing with. So we got that in just in time. And I spoke with her today on the phone, and we're going to move the Parks and Rec meeting to August fifteenth, which is Monday next. And hopefully, she'll be back in one piece and, because she wasn't today, so we'll see how that goes in the future. The Parks and Rec Committee is still focused on the CIP for parks and for the vision in parks. And I think we got a good overview of where things are and communicated pretty well where, what expectations were on a, on a lightweight basis, because this is all contingent upon, you know, the work session meetings coming on and what council's input is. So looking forward to that. In terms of music in the park, you're, you're going to get this now on a regular basis. We had a, a interesting event on Sunday. Our tennis was down a little bit because of the rain, but we had a gentleman named Todd Berry, who does impersonations. I was a little antsy about it because I wasn't sure what we were going to get. But the, the group that was there just really appreciated it. And I, I got warmed up to it too, as he got into his show. So he may be coming back on, on an annual basis or semi, or biannual, in any case. Next week, we have Emerald City Swing Orchestra, which is a Dublin-based eighteen-piece musical group, classic. The, the kind of music you heard in the forties and fifties and up to the seventies, eighties, nineties. So they're very good at what they do. So if you're interested and would like to come out to Music in the Park, seven P M. on Sunday evenings. That includes next Sunday. So, thank you, Mayor.
And, and let me just add one thing, Mr. Reed, because I didn't, I meant to say this. So we do, we are inviting the Parks and Rec Committee. We also, whoever from the public that wants to come to that meeting, it's a good time to come. And we did kind of focus our conversation because basically you can go down, Parks and Rec can go for days and hours and weeks. The main goal that we want council to think about between now and then is, the thing we want to get out of that meeting is what is the future of pastime park? Because that will drive so much of the rest of the conversation about, do we need different parkland? Or are we going to look at how we're using pastime parks? So over the next few weeks, I just would ask that everyone kind of think about that. I meant to mention that, I apologize, Mr. Reed. Because that would be a good, if we can get out of that meeting, as Mr. Reed said, with that statement figured out, we'll have done a lot of work, so.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Terry, because that is, that is the fundamental baseline issue with Parks and Rec. Is what's the future of pastime park? Okay, and, and please think about this as you go home, because there could be some radical changes in pastime park. Those have been suggested. And so think about what you're willing to accept and, and what you would like pastime park to be. Do you want it to be a park? In the traditional Dublin-style metro park thing? Do you want it to be a fairgrounds? Do you want it to be an athletic field? Do you want it to be something that, like what I saw this weekend was amazing. I'd never seen that before. With all of the facilities, except the youth building occupied with large groups. That's the way a park should be used, in my opinion. That's the value of what I call the Emerald Jewel Plain City, which is pastime park. So thank you for that, listening to that long speech about it. That's very important.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Reed. And also, is the Explore the Darby Day on, Mr. Reed, is it? Explore the Darby, is it on August twentieth?
I do not know.
I'll just double check on that. Thank you. And Ms. Ferguson, Personnel, Finance and the?
Okay, well, first of all, Personnel and Finance, we met on July twenty-seventh. So this was just the very beginning of the budget talks. So basically, Ms. Lupton and Ms. Sonnet, you know, they presented the committee with council goals as well as staff goals. So we went over those and just kind of starting to look into how they're going to fit into the budget for next year. Also, they're letting us know that supplemental budget will be formed soon, which will be addressing a couple of the items that were mentioned in one of our letters to council was rising police crews or maintenance costs as well as some additional engineering expenses that will be accruing before the end of this year. So just a couple of things to like start thinking about. We are meeting, and I apologize, Ms. Sonnet, what the date is of our meeting?
August thirty-first.
August thirty-first. It's our next meeting. So anyways, it was great conversation. Mr. Reed was there. I mean, it was, it was, it was really nice. We also, the committee got a chance to meet Mr. Stanford, the new Economic Development Coordinator. And lots of positive feedback from committee members about, it's great to see how we're putting our money to use. And that, you know, it's great to see some of the goals from the past just start to be becoming, you know, you know, part of our future. So anyway, real quick though, I want to mention that Thursday evening at six o'clock at the Dur Dutchman, the Lions Club is having their annual dinner and auction. So if anybody gets a chance to go, COVID put it on hold a couple of years ago. Last year, they had it outside. So they're really hoping to get a good crowd there this year. It is a lot of fun. For twenty-three dollars, you get dinner and auction and a good time. So if anybody would like to do that, get ahold of Lions Club member or the pharmacy, or you can come up town and see Main Street Treasures, we have tickets. Thank you for letting me mention.
You're, thank you, because it is a good time. I, I tended, I was able to attend the outdoor one last year, and there's some really good auction items. I mean, they had everything from queen-size mattresses to different donations from each business. So it's, I'm unable to make it this year, but this, that is a great evening. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Fireboard?
Fireboard, no word yet on the FEMA grant. The rescue truck is about three or four weeks still out before it's going to be in the station. Right now, it's over at Heritage getting things mounted. That's the technical term. Let's see, they completed their part-time hire process and have six new staff, so they've got the station back up to level again. And Chief Kidd wanted to thank, he thanked the board, but that extends to us as well for the opportunity for, that he was able to serve as the president of the OFCA. So his presidency just came to an end and he wanted to, to extend that thank you out to us. And those are the big things.
Thank you, Mr. Sens. And Mr. Rucker, Design Review Board?
Of course, I was unable to attend. I believe Ms. Brill might be able to maybe fill in.
Sure, so the application on the agenda was for one fourteen, Main Street. It was tabled the month prior and received a partial approval for the installation of the doors and windows on the facade. At this month's meeting, they discussed the addition to that building, which would encompass an elevator for that building to provide ADA access to all three stores of that building. Ultimately, that was approved.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. To tag on to Rock the Clock, Upco gave out their facade grants to the, to various business owners. I believe that the bank building, the heist, received grant money along with Mr. Medici for, to repair his balcony. I'm trying to think, Main Street Treasures, you received money from Upco.
We don't know what it's for yet.
Oh, yes, yes. And Sweet Dreams Salt Spa received some for their imperative new bed that they have in, which is, if you get a chance to try it out, it is wonderful. And then, Mr. Dawson received the large grant for all the work of the mural. He's putting a mural on the side of the food pantry building along with the installation of the new windows and, and the work. I think Ms. Shannon Pine presented the grant. She said it was going to be around ninety thousand dollars for what he's doing to his building. So that's why the largest portion went to, to him. But several businesses, Rummel Brill Insurance, they received a large grant as well. So good things are happening in Uptown, and it was nice that Upco could kind of wrap up their chapter. And there's been lots of questions about if the car show's happening or if it's not. And so it just goes back to volunteers, so.
So they basically divest themselves of all of their funds? Just make joy in Plain City, I'm sure.
Yes, yes. So thank you for the reports. Moving into old business. Second reading ordinance fourteen dash twenty-two, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of unvoted general obligation notes in a maximum principal of amount of ten million dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal wastewater system by improving, expanding and increasing the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant and acquiring any necessary real estate and interests therein, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance fourteen twenty-two.
Second?
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Yes.
Second reading ordinance fifteen dash twenty-two, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of unvoted general obligation notes in a maximum aggregate principal amount of one point, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of various municipal public improvement projects.
Motion to accept ordinance fifteen dash twenty-two.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Yes.
Second reading, Resolution thirteen dash twenty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the village administrator to execute a community reinvestment area abatement agreement for the property located at one fourteen West Main Street.
Motion to approve Resolution thirteen twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Sens?
Yes.
Second reading, Resolution fourteen dash twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the village administrator to dispose of village property no longer needed for public use.
Motion to accept Resolution fourteen dash twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Sens?
Yes.
Moving out of old business into new business, first reading Resolution fifteen dash twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the waiver of park fees for the Darby Station development and authorizing a real estate transfer for approximately forty acres within the MI development.
Real quick, and I know Ms. Lupton's not here, so Ms. Brill, sorry to put you on the spot again. Looking over this, this is the exchange for the parkland, the swamp, the like floodplain land, right?
It would be the land that is on the south side of one sixty-one.
Okay.
And, and east of Darby Creek, right?
A portion.
Yes.
And, and this, this, we've talked about a long time ago, we, so this all went through planning, zoning, everything like that as well? Or is this go directly to us? Did they have, did they, did planning and zoning have a discussion about this at all?
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions? First reading, Resolution sixteen dash twenty-two, a resolution approving renewal of contract for the collection of residential waste and garbage with recycling. First reading, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two, creating a new fund for the purpose of receiving and expending one Ohio opioid settlement dollars.
Just one question about this. This, this is because it's required by statute, right? Otherwise, we'd do it.
Right, it goes into the restricted fund.
Thank you.
And, so I actually had a question about this. So the restricted fund, what all, like, is there a list of things we can use it for? Okay, and could you, has that been made available to us in the past?
No, this is the first time. We applied for it last year, maybe.
It was last year, and there was part of an agreement. It was an actual settlement agreement. I, I could dig it up.
Yeah, I, I remember this. I just don't remember exactly what we can and cannot use it for.
They do drug-related, like abatement of.
Or kids.
Yeah. We, we have a fund similar to this that we use portion of funds to help by ANDOR.
Okay, perfect, cool.
So what's the timing of this receipt of the funds? I mean, I know we need to get the ordinance done, so let's say we get the ordinance done next meeting. When do we get them out?
We've gotten a portion of it right now. We've got a small portion from one county. We have another coming from Mass and Heights we have not received yet.
Does that show up in a budget document in place?
It will.
Yeah, okay. So that'll be obviously in the twenty twenty-three.
Well, the appropriation will, yes. Right now, it's not appropriated, it's not planned for.
I, I understand that part, but just for budgeting purposes.
Yep, you'll see the new.
It'll be in the twenty twenty-three, so we'll see that there. Okay, thank you.
First reading, ordinance eighteen dash twenty-two, an ordinance approving the vacation of a public alley within the Village of Plain City near the intersection of West Main Street and Jefferson Avenue.
I have a question about this. It's the same kind of a question that I brought up with the other alley vacation. Planning, Ms. Brill has, has noted a condition for her approval of this in her memo about it. And so I just want to make sure that council approves of that condition, and if they do approve it, it needs to be in the ordinance. So, and the condition is that a joint use and maintenance agreement for the northern portion of the alley, and this is recorded along with the vacation, okay? In other words, it needs to be a document, an official document that the parties agree to. Is that what you had in mind for this?
That's correct. It'll be handled simply. We agree with the meaning of property owners that in the future it will be maintained and maintained.
So that needs to be completed before we approve this ordinance, because they need to be filed together. Or executed together. Is that correct?
I think you can approve the ordinance, but you're approving the authority to go forward under these conditions. I mean, you can hold it until you actually hold the document in your hand, or you can approve it?
Well, I wouldn't want to approve an ordinance without that document in hand, because it's arguably more difficult to get the parties to agree to something that they don't have to agree to anymore. So that's why I would like to see that document executed before I vote on, on that ordinance. I just, council discussion.
Yeah, I, I think, so I actually have a real quick question. So does it run all the way down that alley to the very far end?
Is that alley goes from Main Street to?
So this, we're vacating to all the owners, so not just the Hen, Red Hen. It would be to like all the way down. So this agreement's really with like four people.
Two property owners. One property owner owns three of the properties. There's a, a property owner that owns the one. They sign, both have signed the petition.
Okay, okay. Because yeah, when I saw it, there's, so there's the four parcels, but two owners, okay. Yeah, I don't disagree that we should, you know, the conditions. I, I guess, I guess my one kind of question, and maybe this is for Ms. Lafayette, and maybe, like, isn't it, is, is there no assumed that you have to like maintain? isn't it, is, is there no assumed that you have to, like, maintenance, something that we vacate? Do we have to say, like, if they just said, you know what, I just wanna, I'm gonna shut this alley down. Once we vacate it, they can do that?
Yeah, once we vacate.
So yeah, we should probably, so to Mr. Reed's point, we should probably say, like, these are the terms of that vacation. If, if there's no, like, assumed, um, agreement, I, 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 I tend to agree with Mr. Reed on this, like, we should have that, you know? 'Cause I really wouldn't want them just to shut down that road and be like, you know, this is pedestrian only, and we're blocking it so that it is only for the restaurant or something, so that's fine.
Just, just to clarify, um, if it's completely vacated, it's to accommodate a drive-through going to be there, so it won't ne- it'll be private property. Won't necessarily be accessible to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not worried about the, uh, access. I'm worried about the maintenance and the upkeep that Mr. Reed was pointing out. Especially really the other end is actually.
It, it'll be a private property.
That's what I was wondering, like, why wouldn't that? But they're saying that it wouldn't. So on the other side, like, think about it, not where the parking lot is, but the other side of that is like an alley now at this point that we're vacating, and that we would normally plow, we would normally make sure, uh, repaved and everything. So now those, that owner is gonna own that alley. I'm actually surprised they want it. I, I, I understand why the one side wants. I don't understand why the other side would.
Well, the, just, I can speak to a little bit, the, so the red hen, they need the alley all the way to the race route so they can have the parking. So they need agreement with that private homeowner that they can have that access and maintain that access in perpetuity so they have access to the park.
They need an easement or something like that, that's between that part, their, their part of the, of the road. And the point of Ms. Brill's comment was that, okay, we need to have it, some assurance that that part will be maintained. So what did you have in mind with that, then?
Not necess- not necessarily in the effect of they both have to come together, just that there's an acknowledgement that that property owner will be named aware and they'll have access in the future because they have a garage there. It really doesn't prevent you from operating.
So, so the second, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, now I'm kind of a little confused. So at the end of the red hat, they need the second half so they can get access to get to their drive-through?
Yeah, the road will be split in the middle.
Is there on this side?
The red hen's drive-through is on the, the southern.
Yeah, perfect.
The northern half, they have park. So they own, the red hen owns that strip. So they'll get half of the alley. When, when this gets vacated, they'll get half the alley and then use that as access to park. They need the whole alley to get, to get the full access.
I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm a little confused at, and apologize, maybe if you take this offline, they would have full access if we retained ownership. Like, if we retained it, they would, that would be an open alley. So why, like, if I retained it, they would still be able to get to it, and they would have to have a secret.
The, the issue with the vacation became of routing, the safety aspect of routing a drive-through for a publicly open alley created safety concern.
And so once you, once you vacate the southern half of the alley, would it make sense to?
Have a northern part, yeah.
Openness.
We'll, we'll vote on it, what, in two weeks? So between now and then, if we have any questions, I'm sure we can ask, so.
Thank you.
That is all of our new business, and so moving into discussion items, and we have a citizen recognition petition that has been, come before you and, um, was filed with the appropriate signatures. And so it was placed as a discussion item just to give direction on, um, what next steps to take for it.
Thoughts?
Yeah, a couple thoughts. Um, the, I don't have a petition right up in front of me, I can pull it up, but the signatures, I mean, I, I feel like from the letter of the law on the, on the actual, citizen recognition requirements, that there is a statement in there that says, uh, where is the, right here, it says, "Recognition can denote home of signage, uh, or any village immunity," okay. Whereas an individual must either have lived in the community for, in the community for ten years or a minimum of five years if the accomplishment is achieved while living in the village limits. So it comes down to that community and village limits. Um, the, I don't know how strict we are going to be on that. I guess that's the question.
I think the school district would probably qualify as community.
Okay.
On the application, to be fair, it does not give Mr. Nicky's address or any information about him. So we would not know if he's a resident at any point in time or not.
We went to Jonathan Haller's school, so we know he was a resident then. He lives in Dublin now.
No, I mean, resident of the village.
Was he a resident of the village at the time?
Then he lived in the community.
I think, I think that's what's at question here, is at one point, it, in, in, in the same sentence, it says, "Community" for ten years, and then it says, "In the village limits," specifically saying village limits. So I, it's, it's not, it's, it's not saying, I, I'm not arguing one way or the other. I just want the wording to be clear.
Totally. It's, it's a very, it's a very valid and interesting point, because if we start saying, oh, Jonathan Haller's school district, then we say, oh, if you played in PCABA, oh, if you play, if you lived in Hilliard, but you decided to, you know, play, so for the Plain City Sharks. I totally get it. Um, I think that we probably should, you know, figure that out, and I think the merits of the application, maybe we just look at it outside of that, right, and say, you know, they, to me, we got the signatures, they, they went through the process, um, we set a process. I think that, um, it's our first one of these, so I wanna be careful as we set a precedent. So I think what would make the most sense to me, uh, is in two weeks from now, we'll have, you know, a resolution. And, uh, right, this is gonna have to be like a resolution, I would assume, or a motion or something. Yeah, and, and I don't know if I wanna sign on every single entryway, to be honest with you. Uh, I don't know if I ever wanna sign on every single entryway to any of these. Uh, I think that what we need, what we wanna, what I wanna do is figure out a way that we can fulfill this, and we gotta figure out this nomenclature thing, because I think it's a slippery slope. Uh, but like, is there another spot for a sign, you know, in the park, or like, you know, uh, at one of like the, the like cross there, the one sixty-one and forty-two? I just don't know if I love the idea of like a bunch of signs. I know London's literally trying to get rid of all their signs now. I, I would, I really wanna have to take anyone's sign down, you know, in the future. So what I'd like to do is, over the next couple of weeks, maybe we talk with Linda, we talk with the, uh, maintenance guys and say, hey, what, where would you put a sign to recognize someone, where, you know, it doesn't need to, how big does this need to be? Um, does it make more sense to do some sort of other proclamation from the mayor? And, you know, figure out what that looks like, and then go to, uh, I think Mr. Thomas is the one who submitted, it's kind of like, talk to him about that, be like, is this work, you know? Again, I think, I, I think we wanna make this work, but we also don't wanna set a weird, like, slippery slope precedent, is all I would say. Uh, but they, I mean, they got the signatures, they filled out the paperwork. If it's, in the village where it's not, that, I think we probably have if, if we were smart, we wrote something in here to say, or we can do whatever we want.
It does say, um, "Recognition can include signage," you know, as either naming, or, you know, at the park, or, um, other recognition as determined by council, so.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what I'm thinking, is, you know, what makes sense. Um, I, I, I don't know if I have the answer right now.
Mr. Rucker, I, I'm interested in your opinion on this, 'cause you've been around here forever, let's say, and. Well, no.
No, 'cause you knew Donovan Nicky, I believe.
My, my grandchildren have not graduated from Jonathan Haller, so I'm still a new person here.
Okay, fine.
You're, you're new here until your grandchildren graduate from Jonathan Haller.
So, but you're, you're familiar with Mr. Nicky, I'm sure.
Yes.
And, and, so what's your opinion about how this would work? I'm, I'm just curious.
I, I like the idea of, of a, of a, of an appropriate sign somewhere, not, not at every entrance to the village. I mean, I think that's overkill. Um, I mean, I'm thinking either up by the park or where the organization sign is already. I know we have another one.
We do, we, the thing about, like, also, like, plaques in front of trees, like, I know sometimes, like, for some council members that pass on, we planted a tree and, like, put a plaque down. That's less intrusive, it's not like something you see all the time, but it's a memory, it's something that people can go back to, but also allows some. And I think that that may be, is a good compromise that ever, would be accepted of everyone, because again, I just don't wanna set up some slippery slope where we literally have like fifty signs. But again, they, they follow the process. We should take this serious, like.
And I just wanna be clear, this, this is the first one that's come before us.
Yep.
Which has, which has meant a rereading of everything.
Yeah.
And so there's questions.
We literally wrote the policy because, we're learning, we're learning.
This isn't specific to Mr. Thomas's application, as much as to make sure.
I think your point is very valid, too, because I do think, like, you know, home of, you know, what does that mean? It's gonna mean, it's gonna be semantics, right? It's gonna be like, school district's gonna be village. It's gonna, what if I've lived here, but I went to a private school? You know, it's gonna be a lot of different things. So I think over the next couple of weeks, we talk about it, we think about it. Uh, I, I think I like the idea of some sort of thing, and then we come up with an idea. We take it to the applicant, and then we, uh, vote, and then, of course, we have to vote yes or no. There's always a possibility to go to no, but I think I'd like to get us to a point where we're voting yes. So like, if we can get to something that's agreed upon, I'll say, if we said, hey, we're gonna put a sign on every entryway the entire time, I'll probably go to no. So I'd like to get somewhere where we're getting to a yes. Be my generic thing.
This, this sounds like a whole big, a whole, a whole big conversation can be had about this, because the first thing I thought, okay, sports heroes, and he was a, a local hero and a significant athlete. I've heard it from other people who actually played with him at the local level, and so I was impressed about the stories they told, but one of the justifications for doing this for him was his, uh, his, um, perhaps influence on kids to say, okay, a person from Plain City can actually accomplish these things. And so the immediate thought was, maybe this would be a good idea for the school to do, maybe as an, at an athletic field or something like that.
We can't really tell the school.
Pardon me?
We can't tell the school what to do or not.
Yeah, but we can maybe pay for it, a, a plaque or something, and suggest that they're willing to do it. They may jump on the idea for that, for that matter, but that's, anyway, it was, seemed like a really good idea for, for that, that area.
What I would say is, and, and I know you're sitting in for Ms. Lefton, is if Mr. Thomas asks, say, we are going to give timely consideration to this. We are not moving quickly on the vote, but we will give timely consideration and hold us accountable to that. It, we'll bring this up again, I think, at our next August meeting. If we can all kind of coalesce around an idea, then maybe resolution's actually in September, but if we can coalesce around an idea, we all can kind of think about what is appropriate, suitable, and also, uh, the applicant is happy with and everything.
Okay, so one, one question is, where would we put it?
I think that's.
That's an answer? That's a question that needs to be answered?
That's what we've got to think about.
Okay, uh, some, Mr. U Daily brought up, how long is this gonna be up?
Yep.
Kind of thing, and he's, I think he had a nice mind up it was gonna be a year. I think somebody did say a year at, at one of the discussion meetings.
I think it's that's permanent. I think, I think the, I, I think the.
They have in mind permanent?
Okay, we just need to clarify how, how that's gonna work. The other thing I wanted to say about location is, we do have a plaque in the park commemor, that the Historical Society put in place, commemorating something, I do not remember what. It took a couple of years from the time the administration promised to put that in there for actually to get done. So the administration does have a track record.
It's actually, it's actually a ridiculously good idea, even if we don't have signed that. Like, if we had some sort of plaque, and anyone that went through this process could get put on that plaque, if they went through this and council voted, and it became like a one-stop shop for these people, for these, uh, recognitions, and you just kind of had plaques that you just put up, put up names and name. Again, I don't know if that's, I'm trying to think about.
Sort of like what Hilliard has on Cemetery Road, as you're coming into town, there are two seventy, where they have all their state championships.
Yeah, something like that. Well, even if you have, and either you put it like in the park or nearby, and again, this is all just ideas, like, by Centennial Park, like a plaque, and it's like little placards, right? Like, okay, this person has gotten, or this team or whatever, has gotten the votes, has gotten the signatures, council approves it, they go onto that, keeps it nice and clean, keeps it from getting out of hand. And like entry signs, but also is a permanent recognition spot that is, you know, and the next person that comes up that we wanna do, we can just add another thing. Just keep adding up. That might be a good compromise, all this.
So another factor on this is the cost of putting these things out.
Sure.
You know, a sign at the entrance of the village is one thing, that's probably the most costly thing to do. Plaques are not, you know, they're not cheap, you know, necessarily. So, and then there's the budgetary appropriation deal, and given that we're one point seven million dollars budgeted in the hole, I'm not anxious to approve something this year for an expenditure with it, so we just can't keep spending money, um, like it's always gonna be there. So I think the good thing to do would be budget, take it up during the budgeting process for twenty twenty-three. It could happen right after the first of the year, if you wanted it to, no problem, uh, as part of the twenty twenty-three budget. But I think we have to take these budget numbers very seriously and start understanding that we can't have everything we want when we want it, especially when we're that far in the hole on the budgeting.
I think that's all part of the discussion that we need to have, and we can come back with answers and thoughts on these.
And again, I don't wanna make this a bigger conversation than it needs to be, like, this conversation is about adopting that we're gonna do something, you know, and we should move and make that vote in a timely manner. We should, we should respond to these things in a timely manner. How we execute that can be something that maybe takes a little longer, but we should at least treat this as someone went through the effort, they got a hundred signatures, they turned it in, they did what we asked. Now we have to, we have to respond, I think, is what I, all I'm saying. I don't wanna wait till twenty twenty-three to respond to something like this. We wait till twenty twenty-three to do it.
That's fine.
But we should.
You know, the only, only comment I have about it, Mr. Carron, I appreciate your viewpoint, is that the discussions about the, the logistics of it, the when, where, and how might prevent you from doing it, even though you've authorized it to be done. But I'm okay with going ahead with that plan and taking a vote on intending to do it, pending, something like that, or whatever. Uh, I just, you know, we, I, I'm pretty strong on getting through these other questions before we actually do something.
So then for August twenty-second, we'll put this back on as a discussion item?
And I think that'll give us time, because it's every one two weeks to think about it, talk, talk to neighbors, talk to, maybe even talk to Mr. Thomas, say, hey, what if, what if we did this, would this work, you know? It's the first time.
Where we would put it, like, and then that way, then September's meeting can put the resolution on.
Some sort of resolution.
I agree, a timely manner.
Yeah, we should be responding to things in a timely manner. We owe that much.
With that, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Oh, there's no executive session. I think this is just a, a template.
It's also a placeholder, if you wanna amend.
So disappointed.
If you wanna amend the.
I'm so disappointed.
But there's no.
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Meeting adjourned.
Ms. Baldwin, have we turned off before you?